Thank you. We will call to order this reorganizational meeting and regular board meeting of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Tracy, maybe we'll have a roll call, please.
Carrie Alice, here. Justin Thomas.
Here.
Tara Bowman.
Here.
Scott Huff.
Here.
Cory Jones.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
Here.
With all seven members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. The mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Everyone's seen the agenda. Any changes, additions, subtractions that anyone would like to see? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Election of officers. We will currently ask for nominations for Board President. All nominations will not require a second nomination, is just a single motion.
I nominate Scott Huff for School Board President.
Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Scott Huff as School Board President, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again for your trust. The Board will now ask for nominations for Vice President. I would nominate Tara Bowman as Vice President. Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Tara Bowman as Vice President, please say aye.
Aye.
I would now ask for nominations for Treasurer. I would nominate Justin Thomas as Treasurer. Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Justin Thomas as Treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
And I would now ask for nominations for Clerk.
I nominate Carrie Alice for Clerk.
Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Carrie Alice for Clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are on to annual appointments. Board committees. As we've done in the past, we will, first off, this is really nice because it's the first year I've ever been on the Board where we didn't have any turnover. So if everyone's content with where they're at, we can do that. If anyone wants to change it up or be somewhere else, let me know and we'll make a swap or a change. But I'm kind of getting a lot of nods and contentments, so if everybody's good, all right, then all committees will remain in place as the same. Thank you very much. Wasby Delegate, I would be happy to continue on that path. If everybody's good.
Second.
You bet. All right, yeah, thank, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Let me catch your breath first. All right, so that will be that. CISA Rep. Matt had said you are unavailable for the CISA meeting, right?
The meeting is next week and I'm going to be out of the country.
Okay. What day is the meeting?
Thursday, I believe.
I believe it's the 17th of May.
Fifteenth.
Excuse me, 15th of May. Tuesday. It's annually held at CISA II in Whitewater. This would be the, yeah, it's their Board of Control Annual Meeting. I believe seven, seven o'clock. So to clarify, the Board needs to indicate who the rep is. Whether the rep's able to go or not is dependent upon availability. So CISA II last year had a new executive director. It was previously Gary Albrecht. It's now Dan Hanrahan. Exactly.
Doggone it. All right, so we will have Tara Bowman as CISA Rep. and Board Secretary. We would have our dear friend Tracy Plots remain as that with a happy nod and smile that way. Here, here. Annual designations. This one we will go through. Designate a regular meeting time, date, and place for monthly Board meetings. So we'll take a motion and a second and a vote on this one.
I make the motion that we keep everything as is. Can I say that that way?
I think everybody understands as is.
Second.
All those in favor of regular meeting time, 7:00 PM on the second Tuesday of the month in the Palmyra Eagle Area High School Community Center, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is set. Annual designation for legal and labor resolutions consultants for the district. Steve or Sharon?
This isn't required by the new Neola policy. It had been a previous practice. You can choose not to do so. If you're looking for a recommendation, we would recommend the firm of Boardman and Clark.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Boardman and Clark as legal and labor relations consultants for the district, please say aye.
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 All right. Designate a district depository. Sharon?
First Citizens State Bank.
All right.
(Inaudible)
And a second. Thank you.
Bless you. And a, all those in favor of First Citizens State Bank as the district
depository, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Designate persons authorized to sign checks, contracts, agreements, and purchase orders. What do we have currently? The two of you? That's it? Right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Move to keep persons authorized to sign the same as previous.
Second.
All those in favor of Sharon and Steve as the persons authorized to sign checks, contracts, and agreements, and purchase orders, please say aye.
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 And last, designate administrator to assume specified responsibilities of the Treasurer and/or of the Clerk. Again, both of you or just one of you? Who, what did we do last year?
Both.
Both?
I would do it by position.
Instead of name?
So district administrator, controller, yeah.
You bet. All right.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. With the Board reorganizational meeting under control, we will now consider a motion to proceed with the regular Board meeting.
Motion to proceed with regular Board meeting.
Second.
There you go. All those in favor of proceeding with regular Board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Public comment?
I got nothing.
I got nothing. All right, thank you. Committee reports. CNP, please.
We met this past week and Kathy Retske did, as always, phenomenal job with her report. We obviously are discussing budget cuts as everyone else is in their committee meetings and I've asked for a couple of different things to be presented to us at the next meeting, just regard, in regards to how much we've spent in the past because when I first started on the Board, curriculum was way down, I think below the roofing and maintenance stuff. So we've done a lot in the last couple of years and I think it's a good thing, but which I just want to do due diligence and look at it like everybody else is doing with their committees. So we have to review that again next month. We looked at some policies. We decided to just kind of leave them as is regarding the support staff. And then we looked at the forward exam schedule, which I believe is all completed now. Always a fun time. And then we talked quite a bit about the National Honor Society, which to my understanding is not a Board issue, but I did want to make a commitment as the CNP Committee Chair, if that remains the same, that we will pursue that and get that nailed down because that's been an embarrassment over the last couple of weeks. So that was about it.
All right. B and G?
This evening, we met and essentially we discussed, it's called Act 143. It's a new initiative through the state as far as potentially providing grant money for safety and security concerns within a district. So we approved and are going to pursue the necessary actions, submit our requests and whatever they may need in order to hopefully get something to help pay for a security camera or a better door, whatever, case tinted windows or bulletproof windows or whatever they can basically give us money for to help with that. And that was it.
Sounds good. Finance.
If we have teachers pass a safety, you know, police officer test, does that mean they'll pay for the teachers or something like that?
I'm told no.
Finance, please.
We met earlier this evening as well. The main topic was Sharon presented the Baird presentation, the gargantuan monstrosity of spreadsheets that goes into making up the budget and tracking expenses and our revenue. That conversation led into our revenue stream and how do we adjust and what do we do moving forward and any potential timelines, which I'm assuming we will discuss at further at some point. And again, if that's going to be in the near future, if we want to, if the opinion is that we hit the November election, then we probably need to meet on that in June or July at the latest so that we can take that avenue and get our ducks in a row if that is going to be the route or path that we take. The other days were in February and April, so we really have three options if that's what we're going to do. And Sharon has that information if we need it again. I believe that's it.
All right. Thank you. And PR, please.
We met earlier tonight as well and Stephanie got us up to date on some items. The Mr. Demler Nature Trail, weather has been a little bit challenging, but it is moving forward. Ms. Dampier and the GTO kids will be helping out to keep the trail cleared and they have an invasive species expert coming in tomorrow to help go over the trail and point out what items should go and what can stay. And the fire department will be helping with a control burn in the area as well. The dedication of the trail is scheduled for next Thursday, May 17th, and that is open to everyone. Honor the educators. Seventeen nominations were put forward this year, which is phenomenal. And Stephanie, thank you so much for your work on that. Ten of those nominations will be receiving plaques out on the wall. All three buildings are represented in the nominations. The 1819 school calendar, Stephanie is moving forward with that. We're going to discuss later on about whether or not we want to go to do a full color or not, depending upon what we decide to do and sales of ads. So we're going to address that later on. Ford Healthcare is offering to, again, pay for the shells of the athletic programs for next year. So that's fantastic. And then the June newsletter will be going out about the second or third week of June, once the content is ready to go. And we will be adding in that Did You Know sheet with all the information on our graduates, the schools they are going to, and the amount of scholarship funds, which is phenomenal. And I absolutely love seeing that number every year. So that is it for PR.
Sounds good. Thank you, Carrie. Administrators' reports. Sharon?
The only thing that I think that we need to talk about is scheduling the referendum for sure, if you want to go to referendum and then scheduling it. And would it be agreeable if I brought Baird in next Board meeting to come and talk to us and they call on what (Inaudible)?
Yes.
Our Treasurer won't be here, but yes.
Depending upon the time needed, does the Board have a preference on whether the Baird folks take what would have been committee meetings or be scheduled in the beginning of the regular meeting where we typically hold Board monitoring? Do you have a preference?
If it's all the same to you, if you can do it at seven, yeah, I can't get here on time. So I don't want to keep anybody longer, but hopefully by, in June, it's a pretty short one anyway. So we can let Baird take up the majority of the meeting.
I mean, right, because we'll still have the inform, we'll still be able to get the information. We just, or I wouldn't particularly be here for the actual quote unquote presentation, but I'm going to have all the information.
Okay, then I'll schedule them for next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Consent agenda. Consent agenda is presented as a single motion and a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Special thanks to the Eagle Lioness and M&amp;E Tree Services for their generous donations. Action Item A. Consider approval of the 2018-19 open enrollment applications.
Move to approve 2018-19 open enrollment applications.
Questions or comments about this? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Did we, we were, what did the email say? You're questioning why there's some current students that are choosing to open enrollment? We were trying to, going to try to get to the reasoning behind that.
So we are going to generate to those applicants survey at, hopefully, end of this week, to get a general sense on the reasons why. Folks will have opportunity to do it anonymously if they so choose, but just to gather some information. I don't believe that that's been done the last couple of years. We'll also include the Did You Know fact sheet that we've worked on last couple of months, along with the questionnaire.
The numbers from the 2018-5 are pretty, started low and high. I see overall, we're pretty much, we're down. We were 76 kids. We're last year with 70 kids.
This year, but do we have, I guess, is there any reasoning you see behind that at the moment? Or is it something we have to wait on and hear from parents yet?
So in my time in the last four years, that's been the pattern. The incoming 4K, incoming 5K or K4 to 5 is and has been the largest number of any of the total open enrollment applications out. In a number of instances, those students, and I can give you an exact count if you wish, but a number of them have been and/or are in a private daycare and/or are participating in an off-site 4K program. And so they're applying to go to what would be the non-resident elementary school as a kindergartner. Some of them also are siblings of already out open enrollment students. So it would be keeping the family together, if you will, for lack of a better term, since the older children are already out. But those 4K and 5K have been the largest in the last four years, at least the time that I've been here. I can say that for those current students, keep in mind that most of these students have never been in the district. There are 10 of those current students. One, we don't believe that all of them actually will follow through and leave under open enrollment. The principals always try to make a contact with those parents and/or to try to get some idea on why there might be a request to leave. But we believe that all 10 of those will ultimately not leave. And that's across all grade levels.
So if I'm, I'm sorry.
I just want to, if I'm looking at this right then, we've got already out private school and home-based. If we add that together, we're pretty, you know, we only have a few kids then actually opening and rolling out to, that are new.
Right. So I think depend, again, this is kind of eye of the beholder, right? It depends on how you want to look at this. But in my calculation, and I want to thank Tracy for keeping on top of this, nine total students of those 70 applicants have been home-based or homeschooled. And a significant number of them have also never been in the district. Twenty are participating in a private school, again, that being either a private daycare and/or a private school such as St. Bruno's, as an example, that's K through eight. So again, those 29 have never been in, in the school district. So you're correct.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Then, all those in favor of the approval of the 1819 open enrollment applications, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action Item B. Consider approval of teacher contracts for the 1819 school year.
Move to approve teacher contracts for the 1819 school year.
Questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the teacher contracts for the 1819 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Can I ask if there's an abstention?
Yep, we'll do any abstentions. Sorry.
(Inaudible).
Abstain. There you go. Thank you. Sorry. Yep, thank you. Okay. Action Item C. Consider approval of the extended hour contracts for this summer curriculum work for the following. Number one, two teachers, eight hours each for the AP math course development for learning for all pilot. Item two, two teachers, eight hours each for foreign language modifications for learning for all pilot. Number three, two teachers, four hours each for music course modification for learning all pilot. And one teacher at four hours for learning all pilot.
Move to approve extended hour contracts for summer curriculum work, items one through four.
Second.
All right. Steve, how about an explanation, please?
The vast majority of those teachers are those for whom either a new course or a new textbook has been purchased and therefore they'll be writing the curriculum that goes along with those new courses. The learning for all pilot is part of the modified grading system moving forward. As you know, that initiative started at the middle school, high school last year. Since they're already writing a new program, basically to reflect a new course or, or an offering, it just made sense for them to also begin writing that in terms of the learning for all program.
How is this outside of their job description, their current hours of job description?
I think it's the provision of time outside of their normal duties, once students are gone, to be able to either take a half a day, which would be the four hours, or a full day, which would be the eight hours, to write that curriculum. It's not uncommon that districts will use summertime. In this instance, all this work will be done prior to the end of June. And in, in years past, actually, there have been teachers that have worked for up to three days, so 24 hours of curriculum time.
(Inaudible).
And, and during the day is, and especially this time of year, there's not enough time trying to finish out and close a school year. I did want to mention, though, in case the Board was concerned, that Sharon does include summer curriculum work in the curriculum budget. So those expenses are covered in the budget.
Is this not why we have two curriculum people? Why is this not done of normal?
Because neither of them necessarily teach AP Calculus or AP Trigonometry. So the courses will actually be developed by those who teach those classes.
Any other questions or comments?
So I mean, every time we get a new textbook, we're going to have to write a whole new curriculum for the same math course?
It's possible that you would want to have that happen?
I mean, that's really the explanation that I'm hearing is...
So as an example, one of the things that the Curriculum and Policy Committee's been looking to do, we've felt there's a void by not offering an AP English course. So I think probably a year from now, as we look at the following school year, in all likelihood, whoever that teacher will be, will probably be asking for eight hours to write that curriculum for AP English.
Well, if you're developing learning targets for these courses, a textbook shouldn't really matter of what you're teaching. So we shouldn't have to redo these all the time. If, if the learning targets, I mean, I think that's what you're doing. I don't know why we would have to, every time we get a new textbook, redo this?
I think it's large in number this year because the two math classes and both foreign language teachers are getting new textbooks. And keep in mind that for foreign language, and this has been shared with Curriculum and Policy, part of what they're also going to be doing is hopefully developing a placement test where students potentially at the end of eighth grade may be able to place into the second year of Spanish or the second year of French. So I do think that's unique.
And we're not talking a whole lot of money here.
Four to four hours.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Good? Okay. All those in favor of the approval of the extended hour contracts for summer curriculum work, items one through four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? That motion carries. Action Item D. Consider approval of high school gym floor commemoration as per Board Policy 7250.
Motion to approve high school gym floor commemoration as per Board Policy 7250.
Second.
That's, yeah, that's what I was just going to ask. Are we, what's the plan or the schedule on the process?
We're at $2,600. A little more, we are at a little more than $2,600 raised so far.
Against $29,000?
$17,000, I think it was, wasn't it?
I mean, give a 100% final number, but a good portion, chunk into that $29,000 of what the total estimate was going to be. So...
Will anything be done to the floor, like any resurfacing or waxing or anything this, this summer? Is there anything scheduled?
I would assume that there would be general maintenance and upkeep given to the floors and... I would assume that there would be general maintenance and upkeep given to the floors, in particular that floor, since it needs the most attention compared to the middle school.
Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty bad in the, during basketball season, you could see it.
Move to approve the course fees increases for the eighteen nineteen school year as presented.
Second.
Mostly these are, mostly these are new courses or courses that have been changed, and they are all for supplies for those courses.
For the eighteen nineteen school year as presented?
I have it.
Sharon, you have this one?
DPI mandates that we do a calculator, and, and we must charge what that calculator ends up to be, or within ten percent of that. So we have no choice but to raise our prices.
The whole lunch program?
We are, but not for next year. The bid process took longer than I had anticipated, and so it was cruel to have Annette and all her staff waiting on us until August or whatever it would have ended up to be. So we will start the process much earlier next year.
President, please say aye.
Aye.
Everybody's fine with that?
Sure.
We will combine here, there you go. We will combine action items G, H, I, J, and K, approval of the Panther baseball boosters, the Lady Panthers Home Run Club, the Panther Boys Hoops Club, the Lady Panthers Hoops Club, and the Palmyra Elementary School, all as district support organizations for the eighteen nineteen school year.
Motion to approve all of these.
Second.
Don't confuse the two roles. Thank you. Again, we're at that time of year where there's a, a lot of notes of thanks and appreciation for a lot of activities. Both of the elementary schools, for example, recently have held their grandparent, grandfriend days, very successful, very nice turnout. You know, Mr. Greenquist had indicated that the cafeteria is no longer large enough to hold everybody in that facility. So again, nice, nice opportunity for both of the elementaries to, to, to put their building and their staff on display and their, and their students. Our high school forensics team did quite well. It was a small team this year, three individuals. Two of the senior girls received perfect scores, so they're kind of veterans in that process. Perfect scores bring along also a gold medal. We had a freshman that participated this year, so new to the state competition, received a bronze, third place. So again, quite an accomplishment there. Thank you to Coach Kelly Dunn, who's been the forensics coach for quite some time. One of our seniors received one of the special Herb Cole scholarships in the amount of ten thousand dollars. That appeared in the Palmyra Enterprise a few weeks ago. So congratulations there to Brittany. She will be attending UW-Whitewater in the fall. One of our seniors also will be attending Dubuque University on a softball scholarship. So congratulations to Gina. Trailways Athletic Conference does a recognition for top senior students, similar to what the Rock Valley Conference used to do with the top ten. We actually had six students that went forward to the banquet that was held at Geneva National recently. So congratulations to those seniors. I want to thank Andy Pickett. The weather, as we all know, has just been incredibly problematic with athletic events, and, and now we're finally being able to get caught up with our, our scheduling. So there were numerous weather-related postponements and cancellations and reschedules. And for those of you that have students as, as, as parents that participate or relatives, you know how cumbersome and difficult this has been. So thanks. Jen Lantier's class had put together an autism presentation. I included that in your packet. It was one of the OVAUS lessons that was presented a couple of weeks back. I thought that was very nice of them during Autism Awareness Week. Jen Quella, and if you haven't had a chance, but would like to go to Palmyra Elementary, the steam room is, is up and running and has been available for students and classes to, to visit. So if you've got the opportunity and are out and about and want to visit the steam room at, at PES, it would be kind of the counterpart to the Makerspace at Eagle Elementary School. Want to thank, as was mentioned, Forward Exam, thank goodness, is done. If you have kids, you know that they're relieved that Forward's done. But if you have elementary students, some of them are going to be going into map testing. So the, the testing saga continues. And, you know, as an aside, just a comment, we, we have an incredible number of hours and days of instruction that is consumed by required and/or district-chosen assessments, much more than when I took the Iowa Taste of Basic Skills for a day, and that was it. So thanks to, to all those folks. I believe all the makeups are done. We've also finished with the ACT Aspire in this building. So thanks to Annette Kozlowski and all of our food service staff, in addition to this being Teacher Appreciation Week, and thank you to all of our staff for what they do every day. It's also School Nutrition Employee Week. So thanks to Annette and the food service staff there. I included a number of Baird presentations in your folder. I went to two of the three, three sessions at the spring superintendent conference a few weeks back. Just as background and FYI, as we consider the possibility of what we do moving forward, you might want to take a look at, at that information. New out there, and Cory did a nice job talking about the school safety grant opportunity. That's the Wisconsin Act one forty-three. So I don't need to repeat that, other than to say, we will be submitting a grant on behalf of needs in all three of the, the buildings. There is, on the sixteenth of May, which I think is next Wednesday, an art show held at the Palmyra Historical Society. The time's been changed. It's now from five to six. So if you want to stop by, see some of our student artwork. As an aside, for those of you that have gone to the school board convention in January, they're always looking for student artwork and/or student musical groups to perform. So I have shared that information with our high school staff to see if they wanted to submit either student artwork, or if it's a choral or an instrumental musical group, you actually submit a tape, and there's a, a panel of judges that decide who will perform at various functions at the school board convention. So we'll see if anybody submits. I was able to, this past week, attend the National State Superintendent Organization Annual Meeting, which would be all of the state directors of various superintendent organizations, and either the president-elect president or past president of each of the state organizations. There were thirty-five of the fifty states represented there. Great opportunity. Some of the anecdotal information was, I spoke with a gentleman from the state of Montana, who was a pre-K through grade twelve superintendent in a district of a hundred and twenty students that encompassed thirteen hundred square miles. I also spoke with an individual from the state of Alaska, who, as a superintendent, his entire school district is one of the islands in the chain of the Aleutian Islands, which is the tail of the state of Alaska. I thought that was fascinating. Also met a gentleman from the state of New Hampshire, who, because of their winter, we thought we had a bad winter. They lost nine days of school because of record snowfall in the northeast this year. Also met a gentleman from Columbus, Ohio, which is where Ohio State University is, who, in his school district, offers thirty-two varsity sports. That's just varsity sports alone. So you name the sport, and they have both a boys and a girls. They have two full-time athletic directors overseeing that program. I was amazed to find out, in conversations with everyone there, that we all share the same concerns. Everyone's concerned about school safety. Everyone's also concerned about funding for public education. It varies greatly from state to state. A number of other states have, for example, open enrollment. But unlike us, where we're, we're able to count that student as a member and receive some of the aid, in other states, the entire cost goes to the non-resident school district. A number are dealing with how to attract and retain high-quality teachers. Arizona and Oklahoma had representatives there, and if you follow the national news, you know that the teachers in those states have been on strike. So I left feeling as though sometimes we have blinders on, we think we've got it pretty bad. Yet to come to find out, there are other issues that are similar to what we're dealing with in Wisconsin, but others that are perhaps not as bad as what we have to deal with. So I want to thank the, the board for your support of my opportunity to do that. My participation comes at no personal cost or cost to the district. It's covered by my professional association. So that's another added benefit. And I do take over next year as WASTA president, which is president of the state superintendent group. So thanks for supporting that as well. It's a way for me to give back to my profession. So thank you.
Any announcements or board comments this evening? Who's selling lottery tickets this month?
Fire one.
Are we, are we supposed to have like a rotation of the administrators coming through of the other buildings and these gentlemen?
And we have, we have. Each of the administrators has been before you.
Last two months, we've just been quiet.
On two occasions. Yeah, we, yeah, we decided to not have a special meeting to reorganize, but rather include it at, at this meeting. And so we did that. And the one month we also had Baird before you during that time, we've doubled up sometimes. So we had Cindy Sandberg here to recognize those CTE recipients, and then we had a presentation as well. So if, if, yeah, exactly. And if you, if you want more frequency or, you know, doubled up presentations, we can certainly do that. The administrators are more than willing to.
All right. Upcoming meetings and events. CNP will be at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June seventh. What is the, was that the last day of school? Or what's the last day?
Uh.
Is it the seventh?
Thursday, I might have the date wrong.
Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday. The, it's Thursday.
I have the wrong day written.
Okay.
I apologize.
So what is the last day of school?
The seventh.
It is the seventh. Okay. All right. So it will be on Thursday, June seventh. B&amp;G will be at 5:30 on Tuesday, June twelfth. Finance, 6:00 PM. PR at 6:30, and the next regular board meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June twelfth, right in these chairs. With nothing else this evening from anyone, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you to everyone, and have a good night.